Call the work session for the City Council's Act 26, 2020. Approval of the July 12 regular minutes, regular work session minutes and executive session minutes are presented to you. Comments?
So I send a note to all the council members today on some of the section of the municipal minisprah in not reflecting our discussing of the motion happened. The first one, in summary of discussing, it doesn't say council chairman asking for adding the language. And the second part of it is that the municipal minisprah say council chairman made an amendment motion after the motion had passed. It actually wasn't an amendment motion, it was a motion. And I also sent all the council member the video recording reference to the minute exactly when it happened. The third one is that the motion was by the mayor to increase seven thousand into the salary of our chief chairman of just the budget, authorize the mayor to execute a side related documents. But the municipal minisprah reflecting this. Mayor level qua motion to approve the fire chief pay scale with adjustment. It doesn't add the fact that the council also authorized him to execute the related document. And for this, I also asked the city to have the attorney reveal and give us an advice how to do it. Meanwhile, we have panelists in the audience. I'm going to just try to do this.
Trong cái biên bản nhạc của cuộc họp ngày 12 tháng 27 thì tôi có gửi thông tin đến và đến cho tất cả các thành viên của cao sổ cũng như là thành phố và các liên điểm trong cuộc họp xảy ra nhưng không có được ghi trong biên bản cuộc họp cũng như là có cái biểu quyết, biểu quyết đó không được vì đúng. Điểm thứ nhất là khi trong cái biên bản cuộc họp lúc mà đóng cách đóng lược là trong biên bản đóng lược không có ghi chi tiết là cao sổ red và nói là cái mố sành không có được ghi trong biên bản cuộc họp thì nó không có được trong biên bản nhạc của cuộc họp ngày 12 tháng 27 không có ghi ra. Cái thứ hai của điều thứ hai là cái biên bản cuộc họp nói là nghe liên trọng là có đưa ra biểu quyết điều chỉnh sau khi biểu quyết chính đã được bỏ thiếu thì thực sự ra cái đó không phải là biểu quyết thay đổi mà là biểu quyết chính. Điểm thứ ba là điểm thứ ba là có một mố sành là ông Thiện Trưởng Kiều là tăng 7.000 tiền lương cho ông Húc Bảo Trưởng và điều chỉnh hơn sắc. Rằng thời cũng ý quyền cho ông Thiện Trưởng ký các giấy tờ liên quan thì cái biên bản cuộc họp nói chỉ nói là ông Thiện Trưởng Kiều biểu quyết để tăng lương của ông Hắc Sát Hảo Trưởng thay đổi, mới chỉ nói vậy thôi thì là chưa chi tiết. Thì riêng về cái điều này thì tôi có kêu sĩ thành phố là nói chuyện với luật sư để coi là cái cách mình ghi biên bản cuộc họp như vậy có đúng hay không. Và tới giờ này thì là tôi cũng chưa nhận được cái ý kiến của luật sư là như thế nào. And the last one, the motion after the second meeting was recorded. Và điểm cuối cùng là có một mố sành sau khi cuộc họp kết có biểu quyết nhưng mà cũng không có ghi trong biên bản cuộc họp.
So, yeah, so I would like, I also would like to hear the input or the opinions from my council members.
Other councils? Karen Nunn? So we have presentations, two tonight. One will be for Major Kyo, who is retiring. And the other one will be for Ms. Reddick. But the dedication that we did today, we have some awards. So then a new business approval for the mayor council decision regarding subdivision property, which you'll see there, which is related to a funding plan for 6520 South East Street. And most of you would know that as through Reince Property, an area subdivision that basically sell it for different purposes. And we'll have some discussion. Do we have a formal discussion on that? Or we can have a formal discussion. Babe, have we done the presentation?
Yes, we do. Ms. Tracy will be here to do that.
Okay, wait for me. Okay, then the other one is approval of IT recommendation for format camera to replace the two digital signs located on I-75 in the amount sixty-seven thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars. And for those of you who remember that, the two digital signs that were in that presentation. We already have two digital signs on those, the dimensions which they say aren't perfect. So we're gonna use product development one and be able to take those signs and do them in different locations. And we're gonna put larger signs that are a little more friendly and friendly. So I'm Steven Wong, Thunderbird. Go ahead, Mom. Eventually, we'll have some in city hall here too.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council and the city in public. So I'm presenting information about the screen. So don't fall asleep if you already seen some of the information already. So first of all, there are two signs at the bottom of the state that you can see right there, side by side. It has been completed, which can provide information to the public. Which is very helpful. As we, to the city's growth, we need to provide information, so working on the city, to the public, something like that. And before I go into the detail, so I only ran a comparison why we chose Fomento. First of all, the Fomento screen is thirteen point three millimeter compared to ten because the distance is, it's a three point three. You don't see the difference there, but it same was about five thousand five hundred dollars for both screen. And then the mention I have on the screen there is, it will fill up the gap on the sign at the interstate there. The software, we can reduce the effort with community. So that will capable for the essence and thing as well. We want to be on the same platform, make it easier to use, to update information as well across our platform. And the reason why we chose Fomento again, the manufacturer, they write down in the root, so they are pretty nearby. And if any issue, they can come down right and say that. And also, under the first point here is they all provide 10-year warranty compared to other vendor, they only provide seven-year warranty. So basically, we pay for the screen, but we get a longer warranty and basically we get a big back bug. And also, so you can see the digital border, I did a drawing there from a four feet, four feet height and then eight feet wide versus to six, six feet three point five inches and then ten feet wide. And here's the current examples that it will be look like, how much larger in proportion. Because the screen right now is a bit too small when you look at it. And I have a measure distance there, if you look at the first variable there then it's like you are 150 feet away. So when you add a good distance, you look the screen, like I said earlier, it's kind of out of proportion. And that's why we hopefully we can get the approval to get the bigger screen so we can provide information kind of easy to read for the public. And then you see on the angle there, there's like a fifty feet, if you, if right from the traffic, you look sideways, fifty feet, but the screen is only required about forty feet to give a visual. But I mean, if you look at the measure there, is we are well over that distance for a thirteen point three. And then I got a little bit of video here, so you can see the difference between trial to all the way to twenty-four. So three point three, you don't see the difference at all unless you jump from like eight to nine to ten. Even the screen we got in front of the city hall here is like sixteen millimeter compared to the one we're posting for the Fomento thirteen point three. So do you even see on the screen there the trial, trial sixteen? That's what we forward the number again.
Where's the free coffee?
I think we have a simulator. So that's all of it. That's the reason why we go, we chose Fomento to be on the center for this digital screen.
And then the two existing ones, you're gonna move those to other projects?
Uh, that's correct, yes. The two existing one we can, I'm looking on to provide that in front of LCI. We can provide more information in front of, right in front of the university. Any update coming, we can provide information to the public. So the public can be aware of what's going on around the city. And then the other ones, we don't have one in front of the vision. Then I know the two level four, I mean a lot, we have a lot, a lot number people gathering there to the several two level four. And I think we should have some sort of digital information there in the long run. So we, we don't post our postcard or can provide the lesson information right instantly to the public who live around here, including the north side area.
Questions? This time?
No questions.
Ms. Trey?
I requested a copy of informal written codes because this project is over fifty thousand and by the city ordinance setting three reasons, it require to have informal written codes. And it also require the code to be opened by the purchase and agent at the location indicated and on or after the date indicated on the request for I W Q. Do we have that?
It's on the website, ma'am. It was done in October of 21 was the close-up date on.
What was the closing date?
October of 21 was the close-up date. It's on the website.
Vì cái số tiền tiêu cho hai cái mặt này là trên 50.000 đồng thì theo luật của thành phố số 336. Cái yêu cầu là nếu mà chi tiêu của thành phố mà trên 50.000 thì còn phải có là không phải là đỗ hồ thi kiếm nhưng mà phải có kêu gọi nhà thầu trao giá. Thì là tôi có hỏi thành phố cung cấp cho cái cái giãy mà giúp thằng thông báo là kêu, tao phêu bỏ giá cho cái số tiền này. Và City Mayor cho mới confirm là cái này đã là, và cái này mà cái này mà mở ở phiếu là ngày tháng mười năm ngoái.
So did we, did you announce or the interest that vendors the day that you open that informal codes and ask them to come and when you publicly open it?
Okay, at first I understand is we will announce, we advertise the project because as the councilwoman chairman was saying. So we advertise the project to be posted on our city hall site for about seven days, starting from October 15 all the way to October 2nd. And then we get a form, informal form, and then we need to work in school with the vendor to make the selection.
Thank you for the information. Did you invite the vendors to gather to open the code to public?
When they sending the information, we didn't invite them in. But when they sending the information, we have those number. We didn't invite them, but it's informal form. We, they can come in or they chose not to. Even with the sealed formal form, they can come in, drop the package.
Did you invite them to come to open the code on the date that indicated on the written code, informal code? Did you invite them personally, send that invitation to invite to let them know the code will be open on that date specific date?
No.
So luật định nói là khi mà đưa ra cái thông báo cho mọi dân chúng là mình có cái công việc làm như vậy thì cho dân chúng có một cái thời gian để mà người ta có thể làm việc với chi phụ. Thì luật định này có yêu cầu là khi mình đưa ra cái thông báo cho công chúng mình còn phải báo cho người những cái nhà cung cấp. Và cái ngày cái giờ là mình mở những cái cái báo giá của người ta ra từ một lúc thì thành phố chưa có làm việc đó.
In that case, I would, could we gather the city managers since the informal written codes were closed as a law? I am not quite certain about legal effect on this. And we did not follow through the ordinance to have.
Does it say that in the ordinance, ma'am? Because I'm pretty sure it's an informal bid process.
It's not, it's not, it's actually not a formal bid process. This the ordinance, what the ordinance say. Codes are going to be opened by the purchase and agency. They say codes are to be opened by the purchase and agency at the location indicated on or after the date indicated on the request for I W Q. So we did not.
Does it say that they have to be present for that? Because it's an informal bid process. It's not a sealed bid process.
It is, but it say they have, you have to open it. So because since I am not a law expert, I would need the legal advice to get, to give us the legal advice how to select the vendor. And I do believe that I have sent that request at six o'clock this morning, in place of concern.
So based off of sending at six o'clock this morning, we had, we had a retreat where we laid out a framework for receiving information for the agenda, any questions, a cutoff date, understanding, it was mentioned and it was agreed upon by this council at that retreat so that we could have smoother operation and flow of information. That if your request is sent in same day as the council meeting, you will run the risk of not having your question answered, especially if it has to be sent out to the attorney for review and a response. So if you're saying you sent it out six o'clock this morning, you're not providing city hall staff enough time to respond to the research necessary for your question. I'm just repeating what we all talked about in the retreat in wanting information to be shared and spread in a timely manner so that questions can be asked, receiving the agenda on a certain day, having our questions for this city hall by a certain time so that we're considerate of that, that research may be necessary in order to answer the question. So I'm just laying that context for the audience. I don't know if someone wants to translate so that all of our guests can understand. I prefer for you not to translate.
Other, other comments?
Yes, yes. And I appreciate the fact that you brought up the discussing in the retreat. Enough retreat to actually pick out practice then for on July 19 to give the council the package a week before the meeting started. And we all agree about that, we were going to have the city attorney working with the city manager to track out an ordinance or resolutions or policies so all of us can follow through. The fact is that this package of the agenda did not get delivered to the council until four o'clock on Saturday this week, last weekend. So it doesn't look like we followed through what we already agreed and discussed about. And also, the fact is that when you put an agenda in front of the council to vote, it's not a hundred percent or ninety-nine point nine percent of majority of that you already have or the information ready for it to be presented. The reason the council set up the day and time of giving the agenda as well at the courtesy timeframe to have the council to get back with the staff, to get the staff, give you the answer is that to, so we can work smoothly together. But when the agenda will given to the council at four o'clock on Saturday, so the legal advice, the legal advice arrives. So what's up in this thing? Is the request being met during the weekend or six AM on Monday?
Cảm ơn cao sổ này đã nhắc cái việc là cao sổ của mình có đi cái retreat thì toàn bộ cao sổ đã tập ý rằng là từ nay đã đi là cái, và trên là cái cái vị, cái những cái những cái mục mà trong là xã thảo luận cũng như là quả phiếu trong cuộc họp sẽ đưa cho cao sổ tuần trước cuộc họp. Và cao sổ sẽ có khoảng là ba ngày để mà hỏi câu hỏi. Thì để cho bên thành phố chuẩn bị có trả lời. Nhưng mà theo tôi á thì là khi mà thành phố đã bỏ ra đưa tất cả những gì nó đưa cho cao sổ để cao sổ thì thành phố không phải là chính quy chính thống chính phần trăm là có phải là cùng bảy tám mươi phần trăm là đã có thì không tin ra rồi. Bây giờ nếu thực sự ra cái những cái mục mà ngày họp ngày hôm nay là đưa cho cao sổ vào thứ bảy, bốn giờ chiều, thứ bảy tuần rồi. Thì nếu mà nó có cái yêu cầu mà có như của anh Kai đưa ra cho thành phố lúc ngày thứ bảy hay buổi nhật.
So add this to the calendar.
Hold on a second, because cao sổ này, cao sổ này. I'm not listening at all. I'm just saying, cao sổ này, I will have in the form. I wasn't finished speaking. Please let me finish what I was saying and then you can come in.
Are you translating for me?
No, I'm not translating for anyone except myself.
Thì, thì mình có yêu cầu là có luật sư phải cho mình biết là mình nên làm như thế nào. Thì có khác, cái, nếu mà cái yêu cầu đó được gửi ra cho thành phố vào cuối tuần hay là sáng ngày đầu tiên của ngày thứ hai, có khác gì? Từ cái thực tế đây, cái việc này này là không có cho người cao sổ có đủ thời gian để hiểu là cái gì mình bỏ thiếu. Và nếu mà mình còn có luật sư giúp cho mình để biết là mình làm như luật pháp thì là đúng theo quy định thì mình không có việc nói gì nha.
Other comments? Council members' call.
So how are we stepping up? In terms of quality, are we stepping up on resolution of the new screen? We had the old screen, it wasn't a way enough. The previous screen and the screen that we, you were proposing, the resolution and the last.
The resolution, because screen, they run at one forty-four by two forty. So basically, we own a large screen, so we can similar to what you seeing at a large screen. Because of, because of the, they measure by thirteen point three millimeter. Basically, you standing around like forty feet away, so you get the better view. But if you are at the ten millimeter, you standing around like thirty feet away. If I show you the previous slides here.
I know, I just want to, you know.
You don't see the difference at all. So why pay more if you don't see the difference?
Just, that's my question. Thank you.
Yes, I think we spoke the last, the last meeting about the two strings that are in place now about moving them to other locations and whether they would be two-sided or if we would be able to pivot that one by the district.
Yes, I'm working with the city manager and the road director to develop a location because the location is in front of this street. We want to do a bit of optical because of the manhole. It's a manhole right on this side, we're glad to propose. And city manager and I, Brandon, were out there last week to develop a location. So we kind of, there are a bit of a change because if you see the, the pillar in front of the LCI, that is the, the location we think we propose next time. Because the pole are there is, I think, we think the good location to have a double-sided cavity. And I'm working to get a drawing, trying to show the mayor and council because the current drawing, if we do a double side, we look. we look backward on one side. Because the.
Code is small here.
So if you look at the picture I show here, so if you do a both side, you do the same format. So one side, it look, it look correct, but the other side, it look kind of backward. And then you can, you cannot have two column morrow on each end. But if you do on the same column, then it look kind of backward. So Jeff and I kind of, we do the drawing and we will propose to you when that drawing is done and to see how it look. Because right now visually, we got a first base from the ground up and then the second base. The first base probably says LCI Marrow Station. And then the one on top probably says give a quality growth to the seal. And then we come over the screen and then we have the word morrow kind of arch right above the screen. So if you look on the north and on the south, you look at identical. So we don't look backward. But in order to do that, we have to remove the pillar in order to have enough space in that area for visibility.
Do we have electrical access?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Good questions, because we had that last time. The, a couple of points of information. The city has been talking about, you know, some signage, different types of digital signage to do advertising for small business development to be able to advertise in the city or in the state university for a lot. This isn't something we just decided. That particular sign took a tremendous amount of time, the two that are there, to complete. Anybody that's been involved that realizes that. So when you have requests for quotes, which is just a process, and they look like they were forever ago because of October, they're really not. They just took forever for them to finish it. So, you know, once they were finished and we have that project completed, we're able to do some other things. There will be some additional signage out of the one here at City Hall on the main section. We will look at some pricing for that, which I think we have. I don't know if it's complete yet. And it'll be much bigger. And then we'll take the ones that are there and we'll move them around the state as well. Just one little way to take advantage of traffic counts of fifty thousand, forty thousand, fifteen thousand are coming that way.
Yeah, I just want to say, the signs are working. As far as the marks was concerned, we've already secured three contracts based on. We ask every customer, what did you hear about us? How did you hear about us? It's already, it's already happening. So it's, it's great, you know, that's what almost nine thousand dollars of the business just to somebody passing by.
So let me, I pulled some data from GDA, the last council meeting. So each day, we get about thirteen thousand vehicles that actually coming in from the south and then about seven thousand that come in from the north. So basically, that's a tremendous amount of people that be able to see what going on in the city. So information is very important. People love to know what going on in the city. What going, I mean, what kind of event happening? What kind of public safety you can provide to us? Basically, right, right instance in front of your, when you in and out of the exit or even when you drive through the, you'll be able to see that information. Rather than look up on the phone or come to the city for, I mean, thing like that. I mean, we, we try to best pull up information to everybody on the same page as we.
Excellent, excellent. And you want to pick another point of information. If you talk about opening up an informal quote, our informal quotes are sent to fifteen hundred on already. Just like if I was to send you a letter to your house. I'd seriously, we opened up the mail somewhere else. Pretty sure we opened it here. And that would be the only way we knew we got the quote the first place. Otherwise, none of us would have it. And it would be an imaginary quote. Not to be confused with a sealed bid, which is required from state law and is a very good process for that on things of about a hundred thousand dollars. So let's see.
I'm going to add another discussion point when we talk about this protest policy. So what city of Jones World, the mayor can sign a contract of a counter promise. Anything above a counter promise need to be revealed by the city attorney and approved by the council body by the motions. And that is set in two, that one fifty-seven. Let's see the, let's see the protest policy is that anything above ten thousand have to go through a sealed bid. So for the best interest for spending tax hours, I'm asking the city manager, Jeff. Jeff?
I hear you.
Yes, I'm asking you to have the city attorney draft an ordinance for me to have protestant above fifteen thousand have to go through the sealed bid and the job have to be posted on procurements Georgia State website and also other things that conflict with that decision should be seated. But that can be thing, the thing là.
So, yes, Mayor, did we not vote as a council that one individual council member could make that request without the other council members?
For your information, so she would certainly have a right to make a request. The request would not be honored unless the majority of the council would sign off on it at some point in the year.
Tôi có về cái việc tiêu tiền của thuế thuế nhân thì tôi các tham khảo, luật phủ lên city, city Jones World long thì trưởng có thể ký một năm từ một ngàn năm trở lại. Quá một ngàn năm thì phải có sự nghiệp của city attorney, có người luật sư thành phố và cũng như là có sự đồng ý của toàn thể thành viên của, vị viên của hội tập là phải biết. Và city của Red City đó thì là những cái chi tiêu mà trên mười ngàn đó thì phải là bỏ theo, phải sử dụng là cái đấu thầu ở phương kính. Tôi yêu cầu người city manager Jeff Becker là liên lạc với luật sư của thành phố để giúp cho tôi thảo ra cái dự luật. Là nếu tiêu tiền trên mười lăm ngàn, thành phố tiêu tiền thuế thuế nhân trên mười lăm ngàn thì phải có một cuộc phải bỏ, phước thầu, bỏ đấu thầu ở phương kính. Và cái việc làm đó cũng sẽ phải bỏ lên cái website của ban và để cho website đấu thầu của ban để mọi người cùng biết. Và những cái gì mà không có theo cái luật của nó thì là everybody, you do, you do one name, who you read about. And to respond to the time limit, Mayor, by the charter, any council member can introduce an ordinance. And that might, that is a primary job and responsibility of every council. Until the ordinance is on the floor for the council to walk, I'll give the support from the council, that would be the time the council has their opinion. But until then, that is the job of the council. Please do not interfere. Thì tôi cũng có, thì trưởng các máy là phải còn có tất cả vị viên quả phiếu thì tôi mới được ra biện thảo luật. Thì tôi có tư xin đối lại, trả lời lại này. Theo như trong cái cuộc họp của thành phố thì mỗi vị viên có quyền đưa ra bản thảo nghị luật là theo tùy, tùy theo mọi người. Đến cho đến khi mà cái dự luật nó đưa ra cuộc họp để bỏ phiếu đến thứ tối nay thì mỗi người vị viên có quyền là bỏ phiếu đồng ý, không đồng ý. Nhưng mà cho đến khi đó thì phải là cái quyền của vị viên là trình bày, dự thảo dự luật là cái quyền của họ mà không được cản trở. Cảm ơn.
Mr. Ward?
Well, sir, good evening. Good evening, guys. Hello, hello, Mayor, Council, Manager. Before you leave tonight, tomorrow's center, since May was this year, we have garnered, deposited fifty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventeen cents into our account. Mayor looking at a breakdown of twenty-one thousand, June seventeen thousand, in July sixteen thousand. We are looking at, I'll give a comparison to our pre-COVID numbers. We brought in about twenty grand for June. Pre-COVID twenty nineteen was twenty-nine thousand. June, July, August tend to be slower months because of like this global vacation, etc. The events, the highlights, Georgia Cyber Academy, the Atlanta Postal Credit Union, the Atlanta Med Gala brought us a lot of attention two weeks ago. The Anthony Gorel Center for Dance Gala. We have some big upcoming events. The Georgia Chapter of Investment Conference on August twentieth, this Saturday, is the tomato sandwich party sponsored by the World Concert of the City Tomorrow. They're put on by the Big Shepherd Clinic and they are doing free COVID vaccination there as well. The Pink Iron Women's Business, the Beauty Master brand has, they're doing their Christmas party and their, their scouts gala with us in December. We are also working on our first concert featuring Erica Dawson. So that'll be our first in-house concert. We had one concert outside, this will be our first in-house. We have, the Mars Center is also a, we are a registered venue with the community service program with the parole system now. So we cut down our labor line almost by a third just by getting that staff there for free. And then, of course, I had a call with the International Association of Union Managers this morning with all the union managers around the country. And our number one concerns are inflation and the rise of COVID-19. We're all seeing it in ourselves.
Any questions? Mr. Trump?
No questions.
Mr. Trump?
No questions.
Mr. Cora?
No question.
Foundation? Not there.
Yes, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you, at this point, tell us what do you think would be, probably be your top customers going forward?
Uh, weddings and actually social, the social contracts are still the number one in terms of like parties, weddings, things like that. But we're seeing a thick in corporate clients such as the U A W coming in September. So Home Depot, things like that, including the conferences are still coming.
So are they staying in our hotels?
Oh, it's my pleasure. We know I pushed it every time.
Restaurants and everything like that?
I do get a lot of requests. We're here yet, but I'm, I'm, we're working on these.
Okay. Thank you.
My pleasure.
But we're hoping Marty is going to show up and get a presentation of us. But, uh, you want to walk us through?
I will do my best. I really take the right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So a hearing to consider the subdivision of the property known as the Drury Inn. So an application has been received requesting the subdivision of the commercial property parcel known as sixty-five twenty South Lake Circle, which is Drury Inn. Before making recommendations to the mayor and council, the planning and zoning board, thank you, Wayne Collins, has reviewed the preliminary plat, assessed the impact subdivision may have on surrounding properties and finally determined by a majority vote their recommendation to approve or deny this subdivision. The following information was provided to assist the PNC Board in determining their recommendation to the mayor and council regarding the preliminary plat. The property owner is DSWN's LLC. Address of the parcel, sixty-five twenty South Lee Street. The zoning classification is mixed use. The adjacent zoning districts are also mixed use. Parcel size is five point two three five acres and the structure currently is a hotel. The current use is the Drury Inn Suites at Land Tomorrow. The tracts are to be subdivided. Subject out parcels will be marketed for development. Hotel parcel will consist of two point one nine three acres. The front vacant parcel will consist of one point nine six six acres. The rear parcel will consist of one point zero seven six acres and then utility easements carry to the subdivided parcels. Property owner is requesting the subdivision for the purpose of marketing the parcels for future development. Utilities, parking access and other similar requirements will be determined and addressed during the development process or not currently in the development process right now. The staff recommendation was for the planning and zoning staff recommended approval of the preliminary plat with no additions or changes for completion of the final plat. Planning and zoning board recommend, voted unanimously and recommended the approval of the preliminary plat with no additions or changes for completion of the final plat. And then finally, it will be the responsibility of the applicant to report the subdivision's final plat with Clayton County Tax Assessor's Office.
If anybody here from Drury Inn are representing the property owner, it's not required for the preliminary plat. If we're voting something, we kind of want to see a little more. But comments from the city council, this night?
I did ask a question. I'm just curious to know if the planning and zoning board discussed about access with parcels and how it's going to be on today?
So, yeah, I do have a little bit here. So they did, we did, I know that they did discuss, trying to find my note here. But they did discuss what that impacted traffic will be. But at this point, since we're still on the preliminary plat things until they have a developer in place to actually develop the plat, you know, or develop the site, you know, it will be taken under consideration at that time. So but that, but that was, I know, a point of discussion for the planning and zoning board as well what the future impact could be to traffic.
That's an awkward intersection.
It's a very awkward intersection.
And city controls are current, that's by the way.
Right.
So just as long as you're not landlocked. And Georgia law requires if you're landlocked for somebody to give you access. But that is, that's certainly give the access where you want. It's basically, it's, it's lots of ways to control. Miss Train?
I have placed a question to Marty earlier today that in the hearing for the council and mayor stated that this plat is currently mixed use. But the county record is showing that secret general also. And I would swear that the city zoning can be different with the county zoning. And I did ask for a record of the zoning mixed use from the city. I still have not got that information. So I got the advice and this is a legal matter. And the advice wasn't from professional in that aspect to the position and give away the legal advice. I would ask for the council to table this until we get the legal advice from the attorney. Because tax products, zoning different, the tax would be different.
Right, understood.
I actually see the difference between the city have a different zoning and the county have different zoning. Another process after this would be us register the county what it is. So I'm not quite sure about the idea. I have an attorney to be able to completely or fully interpreting the law. And at this point, I need the legal advice in this matter. Cái đất này của, cái cái quả đất này đó thì là trong cái, cái cái giấy mà cũ nhân viên đưa ra cho thành phố đọc là nói là cái cái zoning là đặt, đặt, đa phạt, đa hợp. Và cái đất ở trên quận đó thì nói đây là cho thành phố xem phật thương hải thì hai cái zone khác nhau, cái tuyến sẽ khác nhau. Tôi cũng không hỏi là chuyên gia hoặc luật sư. Cho nên tôi cũng không có biết là phải nên như thế nào. Thì tôi có yêu cầu nhân viên của thành phố và nói với luật sư để律 luật sư hướng dẫn cho mình cái cách nào là đúng. Tự đi theo như tôi thấy trong quá trình mà mình chia cái đất ra như thế này đó thì cái bước tiếp theo là mình cũng phải đăng ký với quận mà mình chia cái đất ra bao nhiêu và cái zoning nó như thế nào. Thì cái cách nếu mình chia cái mô hình nó khác nhau thì có một cái bước mình phải làm nó khác nhau. Cho nên tôi có yêu cầu thành phố đọc là chờ cho chuyên gia hoặc luật sư cho mình ý kiến mà mình phải được phản chiếu. Gọi là uy tín.
So.
Point of reference. The county zoning is irrelevant. The city of Florida controls its own zoning. It's also subdivision problem. Just a fact. You have a future land easement. You have a current zoning map. They're published. They're in the comprehensive plan. And for the most part, they hang out there.